All right, good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will move into role. Commissioner Bowie?
Present.
Commissioner Inger?
Present.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Present.
Vice Chair Pfizer?
Present.
Commissioner Manser, he's not here. Commissioner, sorry, Secretary Peterman?
Present.
Commissioner Akia, he's not here. Mayor Turnbull?
Present.
And Chairman Wiggins is present. All right, we have no personal appearances scheduled for this evening, so that will move us directly into our consent agenda, the approval of minutes from the July 2021 meeting. And Mr. Catterett, are these updated or edited minutes that are with us?
That's correct, sir.
All right, thank you. And for the record, Commissioner Akia is here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Faulkner?
I move that we accept minutes of our July 6th, 2021, meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second by Commissioner Bowie, to accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion on the topic? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seeing all hands, it passes unanimously, eight zero. That will then take us past unfinished business, as we don't have any, into our new business, two cases this evening, starting with case 21023, the rezoning of C2 to PUD, the southwest corner of Dean Avenue and Lucy Webb Road, Ridgeview Estates. This item does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time. And with that, I will ask that the applicant please come forward to the podium to present your case.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, your Mr. Mayor.
Kind of reverting back to the last item, the motion was made to approve the July 6th minutes. It was actually the July 20th minutes.
I beg your pardon. Can I, Mr. Zur, can I restate the motion?
The incorrect date was given. Do we need to restate it, or I said it as the minutes as presented. I don't think I specified a date when I recalled it for the vote, but...
I think we can make it a recall for the vote. So you made a motion for the July 6th instead of the July 20th?
Right. Motion should have been for July 20th.
Chairman, you stated the motion correctly?
I was vague and just said the minutes as presented. And then the vote was taken from the minutes as presented, because I did clarify that Mr. Catterett provided new minutes.
I was a little late putting my hand up. I was checking on the dates here and...
When I looked over, I did see you make a hesitation, so I apologize for not pausing.
Your motion was to approve the minutes of July 6th. I think it would be appropriate to have a restated motion to July 20th?
I'd be happy to.
Very good. Please, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept minutes from our July 20th, 2021, meeting as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second, but was Commissioner Bowie?
Commissioner Bowie?
Yeah, I'll second. Okay. Yep, very good.
So, the motion from Commissioner Faulkner, seconded by Commissioner Bowie, was to accept the minutes from the July 20th, 2021, meeting as presented. Again, we'll call for a vote, please. Just so we got it all perfect. Again, eight zero. Thank you for the clarification and correction. All right, sorry about that. Applicant, please, if you would.
Make sure the microphone's on, please. There you go.
Is that better?
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Jason Maddox. I'm with Mako Development Company. And I appreciate the opportunity to come speak before you. Our purpose of being here this evening is to present to you a rezoning request for your consideration and approval, whereby we would rezone approximately eight acres that is located just off of Lucy Webb Road and Dean Avenue, from its current designation of C2 to PUD. And the purpose of the rezoning would be to allow for the construction, development and construction of 60 affordable senior multifamily housing units, which we would refer to as Ridgeview Estates. So, up to this point, we've met with the city and talked about this particular location. We have held an involuntary neighborhood meeting. We had great participation. We received a lot of feedback and what we felt like was very positive support. Subsequent to that, we had held a required Good Neighbor meeting here. Maybe the participation wasn't as great at that meeting, but maybe that's because we did a good job at the first meeting, I would like to think. But we've got a slide of some of the photos of similar developments that we've done. And this development...
If I can pause just a moment, I'm going to broadcast that.
We had lots of discussion about how we would access the site and that, you know, the city was not comfortable with accessing the site from Lucy Webb Road. We understand that. So, it was determined that the best way to access it was to extend prairie grass from the west to access the site. This project would be marketed exclusively to seniors that are 55 and older. Each apartment would have washers, dryers, microwave range, refrigerator, dishwasher, garbage disposal. Central heat and air would consist about 981 feet. We'd have, the development would include a large community building that the seniors could use for birthday parties, any type of events that they would choose to hold. It's got, it will have fitness equipment in it. It would have a kitchen area that they could use. And right now, we're still working through some of our financial modeling, but it looks like where we're at now that the rents would be approximately 650 a month. Some of them would be lower than that. They would be down to 480, but that'll give you an idea of what the rent range would be. The residents would also be responsible to pay for their electric, but the property would pay for the water, sewer and trash. And we incorporate in all of our designs, energy efficiency components to help lower those utility costs. Just to give you an idea of the income requirements that would be on this property, you could have a two-person household that could have up to just over $41,000 in household income, and they would be eligible to live at this development. And a single person could make up to $36,000. So, as you can see, these are some of the developments we've done in other places. Can you go back to... Okay. No, I mean, these are just, what you're seeing here are some of the community areas that we've done, where you see they have the kitchen ettes and the gathering places for the residents to meet and have meals and parties. This actually was, what you're seeing there is located in Sedalia. It was an old school and it was a historic rehab, and we converted it to senior living. We've got computer centers that we provide. And this actually, what you're seeing now is a development, which would be very similar to what we're proposing to do here. And this is actually located in Carney. And this project, do you recall when we did that one? And it filled up, I mean, immediately. And we're actually doing a second phase in Carney right now that should be, well, actually, we'll start turning some apartments over in the next two or three weeks, and it'll be finished probably in October. So, we just get, you know, overwhelming demand when we finish these. This one actually is in Independence. So, this just gives you an idea of some of the quality that we do and what we're proposing here. So, we would greatly appreciate your consideration of this and your approval. Now, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, we'll have the staff report here in a second, but does anybody have any immediate questions for the applicant prior to the staff report? Commissioner Akia?
You mentioned that water, sewer, trash was included. What about, like, lawn care?
Lawn care, all maintenance and lawn care is also included in the rent, yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
I assume when you talked about income, it's income adjusted on the rent. Is that correct?
The rents are, we have 60% rents and 50% rents. This is not Section 8 housing, so...
No, I was thinking of Lytec as a low-income adjusted housing.
That's exactly right. Yes, it is. So, yeah, the 60% Lytec rents are, we've got them modeled at $650, and the 50% Lytec rents are currently modeled at $480.
So, I know we're getting outside the purview of zoning, but that, the way Lytec works is that you have to get approved by the state of Missouri, right?
That is correct.
Their granting process?
Yes, sir. So, what we would do, if we're approved, we would move forward with an application to Missouri Housing Development Commission. And they are, they've sent a tentative date, an application submission date of October the 8th. We would submit that, and based on our scoring and ranking of the, you know, as compared to the other applications submitted in the state, we would probably find out, you know, at the end of the year, whether or not this would be selected for funding.
And is it the case that you were approved previously for another project that didn't follow through with Back Behind Price Chopper? Was that another project? Wasn't your project?
We've not been approved for one in Raymore, no.
Okay, because I know that we, that the council did consider one on another Lytec project that moved locations.
We applied, but it was not selected for funding.
Right. So, the project didn't go through?
That's correct.
All right. And that would be the same process here, is that if you were approved tonight for zoning, you'd apply, and if approved, build, if not approved, not build?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
You would wait on your application, you would wait on applying again until you got through city council, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, this is, you have to go through one more step here?
Correct.
Okay, just one...
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant before we move into the staff report? Very good. Thank you so much. We'll ask you for questions here in a moment, I imagine. Mr. Catterett, please.
Give me just a moment. Let me give control back of your screens. You have your screens back? Okay, very good. Yeah, let me bring up. All right. Again, Mr. Maddox presented the request for Ridgeview Estates. Specifically, we're looking at a rezoning, reclassification of zoning for eight acres of land. It's on the south side of Lucy Webb, to the west of Dean Avenue, adjacent to Interstate 49. And the request is to reclassify the zoning of this property from its current C2, which is our general commercial district, to the planned unit development district. I included some site photographs of the property, so you're familiar with it. I know most of you certainly have driven by the property. This specific eight acres is at an elevation, actually higher than Dean Avenue. The property does have quite a bit of slope to it from the interstate towards Dean Avenue. As far as surrounding zoning, to the north is the Timber Trail subdivision. Directly north would be the undeveloped phase of the subdivision is zoned R1P. To the east is the Meadows of the Good Ranch is zoned R1P. To the south would be the existing C2 general commercial zoning. And across the interstate is actually in the city of Belton. The land use plan does show this currently as commercial land. And the thoroughfare plan does classify Dean Avenue as a minor arterial street, and Lucy Webb is a major collector street. With those classifications, there are limited accesses granted to those roadways. As the applicant indicated, the extension of Prairie Grass Drive was the preferred access to this property. It actually will eventually be a collector road. It will serve not only this development, but the other parcel right at the corner, as well as the land to the south. And potentially, that road could then be extended south to provide additional accesses to other developments. A reclassification of zoning does require a public hearing that was advertised for this evening. I want to enter to the record the notices that were sent to adjoining property owners within 185 feet, the notice of publication in the Journal, our Unified Development Code, the application that was submitted, our growth management plan, staff report submitted to you this evening, and the preliminary plan submitted with the reclassification of zoning, as well as at Exhibit 8. There are three emails we've received from residents. Two were included in your packet, one we received after the packet was sent to you, and I left that email at the dais for you this evening. Again, as the applicant indicated, the eight-acre parcel, the reclassification to PUD, would allow for a development to be called Ridgeview Estates, a 60-unit, age-restricted, senior housing development. I do note a reclassification to PUD does require the concurrent submittal of a preliminary plan. So, this particular development has the zoning change, as well as a preliminary plan or preliminary plat associated to it. The property is part of the Good Ranch development, so it was initially approved back in 1994, and the current C2 zoning of the property was established in 2002. As Mr. Maddox indicated, there are actually two neighborhood meetings. The first one was an informal meeting. Staff did not attend that, but we did recommend that they meet informally with the residents of the Meadows and Meadow Wood. And again, I believe there was approximately 100 residents at that meeting. The official meeting on July 28th, staff attended, and we outlined the questions and responses that were given during that meeting. This property is part of what's known as Track 1 of the Good Ranch. And in your packet, I included an excerpt of the master plan that shows this entire Track 1, proposed to be a commercial development. The, just to note, there have been a couple of changes to this master land use plan for the Good Ranch. In fact, even the Meadows at Meadow Wood was initially planned to be attached single-family subdivisions. And of course, those developed as detached, single-family subdivisions. So, the land use plan was changed on the west side to lower the density that would be allowed on the west side and as it was developed. Over the past 20 years, there have been several conversations that staff has had with the developers of the Good Ranch, as far as what could be developed on the property. Specifically, we've had discussions about different types of residential development. This is the first application actually submitted for the planning commission and the city to consider. I included in your packet a version of a conceptual plan that staff has worked on for the last, probably five years. When Mr. Tap was Economic Development Director, we started this process, and Mr. Gress has kind of continued it. I simply lay this out as, if there were to be a vision for the property, a city currently sees it, we would see the northern section of, again, we're dealing with a commercial zone property, so this would anticipate rezonings. We have to think about this land as it has been approved for, and the road network has been designed for commercial development. What we're suggesting with this rezoning and this conceptual plan is a change of that actual, to portions of it being residential. Due to the size of the property, 143 acres, that's not going to develop all commercially, certainly not in any of our lifetimes. So, what we look for is what's the prime commercial land, which is certainly at the interchange, certainly at least the south half of this property. What we look for to support that commercial development is having density near that development. So, we have talked to several individuals. The property owners have talked to individuals about doing a multifamily development just north of, or kind of the midpoint of, the development around the existing pond, and then a somewhat lower density towards the north end of the property to try to fit a little bit better with Timber Trails and the Meadows and the northern part of Meadow Wood. I simply provided that in your report as an example of what staff has been looking at. The property owners have had some consideration on as well. I mentioned the PUD requires the submittal of a preliminary plan, which was submitted to you. Any modifications to that plan would require a rehearing process, both through the planning commission and city council. What's important about the PUD designation here is that there is a MOU attached to the PUD, the Memorandum of Understanding, which is part of your packet, and it outlines what uses are allowed within this PUD. That's very important. Unlike a standard, if we're talking about this being a R3 zoning, that would allow multifamily in general, it could allow a lot of different types of multifamily. Under the PUD and the MOU that's being submitted, the only land use being allowed is single-family, age-restricted, one-story garden apartments. What you see is what you get, as far as this submittal. If this project doesn't go forward and the property is zoned PUD, future applicant that came forward would have to follow that limitation, or come back to the commission and ask to reclassify the zoning. Being a PUD, there are two sections of code that do apply, as far as all the different requirements for how it would be developed. Staff has determined that they aren't in compliance with those two code provisions. Since it is an age-restricted community, the preliminary plan was not submitted to the school district, didn't see any need for the review of this application. I did include in your packet a couple of photographs of a facility that we thought was familiar with this. The applicant did showcase the Excelsior Springs, which looked very much like what they're proposing here. This particular development, Perryville, also looked very similar, so we included those photographs. I did submit the application to South Metro Fire District. They did have a couple of comments on the preliminary plan, specifically wanted to have a secondary access. So, you saw on your plan, there actually would be a restricted fire lane off of Lucy Webb Road. The city did not want to have any direct access to the site from Lucy Webb, but the gated fire access would be allowed. The master development agreement for the Good Ranch that was done in 2014 established the requirements for stormwater management on the property, and the preliminary plan does comply with that agreement. Again, the extension of Prairie Grass Drive would be as a collector roadway. We would allow an interim improvement. Collector roadway is 60-foot a rideaway at 32-foot width. For just this development, we would allow what we call an interim improvement, just like we did for Benton House on Johnston Drive. And then when additional development happens in there, the entire roadway is brought up to the full collector standard. The applicant did indicate the amenities of this PUD. In this case, we have the community building, 1,520, approximately 1,500 square feet. And of course, the common area tracks for residents. And there will be a sidewalk connection between the development out to Dean Avenue. I mentioned the Good Ranch MOU, which addresses parkland dedication. So, any residential development in the Good Ranch has already been addressed as far as parkland dedication, which would be forthcoming in the future. Parkland has already been dedicated, of course, by the Good Ranch. There's an additional track that would need to be done in the future. I mentioned the MOU for this subdivision. Again, that outlines the requirements and responsibilities of both the city and the developer, and it also lists the timing of when the improvements are and the amenities are constructed. The engineering division submitted their memorandum on provision of public facilities to the site. Staff did include proposed findings of fact on the reclassification of zoning. And staff does recommend that the commission accept those proposed findings and forward this request for rezoning to PUD to the city council with a recommendation of approval. That will conclude staff report.
Thank you, sir.
Question?
Commissioner Bowie, sir?
Can you all address, just real quickly, can you all address maybe the slope that you talked about was pretty significant from the highway going west? Can you talk about that a little bit, so we can kind of get that out in the air a little bit?
Well, there's definitely a significant slope, I believe, from the right-of-way line of the interstate going down, in essence, to the right-of-way line of Dean Avenue, is a 50-foot drop. And it's more gradual when you get a little closer to Dean Avenue. It does flatten out somewhat, but certainly there'll have to be some site grading needed to be done. It's almost a plateau area versus, you know, almost a lowland area, if you would, by Dean Avenue. It lends itself to be developed. It's just topography is a factor that has to be addressed as part of developing.
Perhaps as a question maybe for the developer, what do you, and I know we're talking zoning here, but since we have plans in front of us, I just thought I'd ask this question. What do you have in place, or maybe coming in place, that is going to keep the residents from the noise and the safety of the highway that's right next to them, you know, in this community? And I know, again, I know we're talking zoning here, but since we're here with the applicant, I thought I'd ask a question.
Sir, you have this... I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, please come up to, just so it can be recorded.
So, as part of this process, we would have the noise study completed. And based on that, that would tell us what type of mitigation issues we would need to incorporate on the highway side of the development, whether that be landscaping, different windows, you know, whatever buffers we need to incorporate into the design to address that.
Okay.
The noise.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Do you want to do that, or do we do, well, yeah, I was going to go into the public hearing and then discussion, but go ahead.
So, Jim or the applicant, so that, there's a, from the plan, that was the conceptual plan for the commercial and some residential development of the pork chop, as we call it. The placement of this site eliminates the possibility of the extension of the outer road or Harmon Road. And I know you said the staff recommended that the access come off of Dean rather than off of Lucy Webb. But I'm curious as to why there's discrepancy from our original plan of extending the outer road and the placement of this site that eliminates that?
I think in discussions with the developer, they felt that that connection and that extension of the, of Harmon Road would not allow them the flexibility that they wanted for, not this applicant, but the Good Ranch felt there was a limits on flexibility with future development, where that would have to fall as far as how it would impact the development of the western portion of the site. Where it was located, it kind of created a ribbon along the west side of the property where it really didn't have developable lots, in their opinion.
Okay. All right. Any other immediate questions? Otherwise, I will move into the public hearing portion. Okay, good. We will come back and discuss some more in a moment. So, the public hearing is open, so we do ask anybody to, from the public that would like to speak or make comments, to please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. We do limit comments to five minutes, so please be aware of that. In addition, if you are coming to state something that has already been said, please basically just say, you know, "I agree with this previous comment," as opposed to spending five minutes saying the exact same thing. So, with that being said, we do ask any members of the public that wish to comment on this particular case to please come to the podium and present your comments. All right, one more chance. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing, and now move into commission members' comments, questions, inquiries, et cetera, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Faulkner?
I have a question.
Make sure you get close to the mic.
Yeah, I know. I'll try to. Probably Mr. Catterett and/or Mr. Zur. So, in the staff report, I think in... So in the staff report, I think in several places, but bottom of page ten, it makes a very clear statement. This will be a fifty-five-plus community with no children. And I've been looking for that in the, mainly in the MOU and just simply have not found it. Doesn't mean it isn't there, but I have not found it. The strongest statement I've seen is at the very bottom of page two of the MOU. It says as a master planned age-restricted community. But can you tell me where the legal restriction for age fifty-five plus is in the documents?
Sorry, could you repeat the legal description?
Oh, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a legal description in the documents, which to me would be preliminary plat or MOU. I'm looking for something that specifically states the fifty-five-plus age restriction.
Okay. Because, yeah, the legal description in the staff reports duplicated at the beginning of the MOU describing the eight-acre parcel.
Right.
And then the preliminary development plan, developing it as a master planned age-restricted community. And I thought there was one other place. Jim, I don't see it in the actual.
Yeah.
Jer, come on up.
Yeah, go ahead, sir, please.
I didn't see the specific language that you were asking in there, but we're fine with putting that in there. And in addition to that, there will be land use restriction agreements that will have that specific language for the fifty-five and over.
Just for clarification, the reason, one reason that that was important to me is that this development doesn't show any garages or anything like that. I'm sort of assuming that it might look something like Benton House, which also doesn't have garages or whatever due to the nature of the residence. But I think with the preliminary plat not showing garages and so forth, that fifty-five-plus age restriction was kind of important to me.
Sure.
I appreciate your willingness. Let's, we'll see what the agreement is here. Thank you.
Okay. Absolutely. Consensus? Mr. Zur.
I appreciate patience with staff as we discuss this. Mr. Catterett is still searching. He believes that there is a reference within it and is continuing to do so for purposes of allowing the matter to continue moving forward. As far as I am concerned, your recommendation this evening may well include an additional condition that the Memorandum of Understanding be amended on page three, section two, B1, to add additional language at the end of that sentence that would read, including but not limited to the age restriction of fifty-five-plus resident owners.
And does that, would that need to include?
I'll let the applicant confirm for the public record that's okay.
Okay. Not only the including but not limited to fifty-five-plus residents with no children? Since we don't mention that piece.
At any age, any age children?
I mean, I guess if you're seventy-five and you have a fifty-five-year-old child, I suppose that would technically qualify and that's the difference between.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
The thing of it is, is that through the state application for the Lytech approval, there are a lot of restrictions and oversight by the state of Missouri that would require specifically the policing of that particular thing that we're talking about, the fifty-five plus. Because your application is going to say that. It's not going to say any age.
It's going to say that all members of the household must be fifty-five and older.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Zur.
And while he's here at the podium, I just want to make sure and confirm. We had the opportunity to discuss the potential change, which would add to the end of that first sentence, special conditions, including but not limited to the age restriction of fifty-five-plus resident owners. Was that acceptable to you as an applicant?
The applicant is acceptable.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Faulkner, do you have any additional questions at this time?
No, that sounds fine. Just to confirm, Mr. Zur, so the addition would be in the MOU, page three, section two, zoning and land use, and it would add a paragraph C after A and B, is that?
No.
Nope.
To the end of the sentence, B1.
And I'll go ahead and repeat if I may.
Okay, thank you.
Section two, subsection B, sub A on page three. It would be at the top of page three in the top one-third section. Commissioner Faulkner, you with me?
Well, I think I am, but.
So it starts off attached single-family dwellings as defined by section four eight five point oh one oh of Unified Development Code.
Okay, B1.
Right.
Two, B1, got it.
Shall be permitted on all lots subject to compliance with any special conditions, including but not limited to the age restriction of fifty-five-plus resident owners.
Clear now, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioners have questions at this time? I had a couple of quick questions. Mr. Catterett, nearby, kind of just to the northeast, is that Greenway Villas? Is that a similarly age-restricted development?
It is an age-restricted development.
Do you happen to know, and I might be catching you off guard here, of any, I mean, are they at capacity? Are they on waiting list? Do they have a bunch of empty units?
They are not at capacity. It's a market rate development.
Sure.
I don't, I know they have at least one unit available.
Okay, but otherwise they're ninety-plus percent capacity?
Yes.
Have we, this was before my time, so were there any issues with that development going in? I mean, it's right in the middle of, I mean, it's got subdivision, subdivision, I mean, on all three hundred and sixty degrees. Were there any issues during the development process or major concerns that were calmed? Any issues associated with it?
On that development, which is part of LaMora Estates, when that subdivision came forward, it came forward as a mixed-use residential. So they have detached single-family, they have attached duplexes, and they had this R3 zone property, which they intended to do from the very beginning, the garden-style apartments.
Okay, thank you. Then the last question, regarding the rezoning and then the applicant having a forthcoming application, is there, is there any reason in a motion to make a motion that the rezoning is dependent on the, I mean, or is there any concern of rezoning this one small section? And then if the applicant doesn't get their application and they decide to not move forward the project, then we have this little postage stamp over here. Obviously, we can then rezone it again, but does it make any real difference to potentially do it again and again, or?
I'll start with the answer.
Absolutely.
Again, with the PUD, I think if this development doesn't move forward, again, the only thing you'll be able to see there is a age-restricted community. So any other developer that wants to do anything differently is going to have to come back in to change the zoning anyways. So it's, we don't make rezonies contingent on other things happening other than, you know, of course, council approval. But we don't do conditional zoning. So it's either all in or not. And again, with the limitations here, it's going to require rezoning for any other type of development.
Fair enough. Yes, Mr. Zur, I see you.
I would one hundred percent agree with Mr. Catterett on this and simply add into that the comment that you are approving it subject to that Exhibit A as well, too. So unless some future developer decide they want to come in and build something exactly like this with the same restrictions on it, they're going to have to come back before you guys.
Very good. Thank you for answering that. Any additional questions or comments from members?
Just a quick clarification, on the other garden-style property that's nearby, that garden-style property is not income restricted, though, right?
I don't believe it's a market rate development. That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so that's the difference between that and this one. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Zur.
And I would simply make note to you this evening that the application for any type of MHDC is not before you this evening. The question is whether or not the zoning is the best and highest use for the property.
One of your favorite statements. I appreciate it for the reminder. Thank you, sir. All right. If we have no additional questions for the applicant or city staff, I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item and I might request that you speak slowly in case I have to have additional notes, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll try a motion, but I think I need to ask one more question first.
Okay, please, sir.
So the added condition that we're considering would add a statement that it's restricted to age fifty-five plus. But what did we, what did we come up with as far as the clause also mentioning children?
I think the final thing was that all residents would be fifty-five plus, if I understood correctly, additionally because the property would be subject to various state oversights. And so therefore, that would fulfill any additional legal.
So nothing, nothing specifically needed to address children as long as we included the fifty-five-plus condition?
All residents would be fifty-five plus would probably take care of that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll try a motion.
Please, go ahead.
I move that we accept staff-proposed findings of fact and forward case twenty-one zero two-three, rezoning of the existing C2 General Commercial District to PUD planned unit development for the eight-acre property to be known as Ridgeview Estates with an added condition in the MOU, page three, section two, B1 at the end, after it says with any special conditions, including an age restriction to occupants age fifty-five plus only and forward to City Council with recommendation of approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second by Vice Chair Pfizer, to accept case two zero one two three, the rezoning of C2 to PUD on the southwest corner of, near Dean Avenue and Lucy Webb, known as the Ridgeview Estates, with the following condition, that the MOU be amended on page three, to be, section one, to add additional language to include but not limited to fifty-five, that all residents be fifty-five or older and forward to City Council with a recommendation of approval, am I ballpark?
You actually stated the number of the case wrong.
Two zero one two, oh, two one.
Yeah, he said two zero one two.
You are absolutely correct. Two, one, zero, two, three. Thank you for the correction. I thought that sounded too convenient to me that way. All right, motion and a second, and the motion's been presented. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right, I see eight, and opposed, no, no opposed, no abstentions. Passes eight, zero. Thank you.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I miscounted that one.
There were some low hands. Can we please?
I'm sorry, I did not see Commissioner.
There were a couple of slow hands and low hands, but I did see all eight. Is that correct, everybody? Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, we will move into our next case, which is one I am looking forward to, case two one zero two-four, the site plan for the Whataburger at nineteen twenty-one West Foxwood Drive. Hey, I'll get into it here in a minute. I'll give you some background. So with that, this does not have a public hearing, so would we move directly into the applicant's presentation, please? And yes, I am a little hungry. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Phil Karanovich. I'm with MS Consultants. I'm the lead civil engineer on the project. I'm here representing Whataburger. So getting right into it.
Do you have the site plan?
Okay. So we're proposing a new three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one square foot, twenty-four-hour Whataburger restaurant on a one-point-eight-four acre lot at the southwest corner of Highway fifty-eight and West Gate Road within the Ray Moore Galleria Development. The existing lot is occupied by Golden Corral currently, which will be demolished as part of this project. The site, the proposed site will provide eighty-two standard spaces along with four handicap spaces for a total of eighty-six. The restaurant will have two drive-through lanes with two menu boards. We will be providing public sidewalk access to the site from the north off of the existing Highway fifty-eight sidewalk. There are two drive entrances off of the Southern Private Access Drive and the Cross Access Drive at the southwest corner will remain. We are proposing a small masonry retaining wall at the northwest corner of the site. We will be reusing the existing utility connections to the extent possible. We will be taking care of stormwater quality through use of a hydrodynamic separator manhole. The building exterior itself is comprised of brick and decorative metal along with a substantial amount of windows. We have a material sample provided up there, if you guys want to pass that around. The bottom two-thirds will be the brick material and the top one-third will be the decorative metal. The dumpster is located off of the northeast corner of the building. It is screened by the dumpster enclosure, which is comprised of the same materials as the building, the sides being the brick and the gate being the decorative metal. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Perfect.
If you want to.
Very good. Does any members of the commission have a question for the applicant at this time before the staff report? Thank you, sir. We'll probably have you up maybe for additional questions. Mr. Catterett, for your staff report, sir.
Thank you, sir. A lot of the items were covered, so I'll try not to be repetitive. As was indicated, this is a redevelopment of the Golden Corral facility. So a demolition permit has been applied for to remove the entire structure as well as they'll be clearing most of the property, removing parking lot, et cetera. I've provided just a few pictures of the facility mainly to show the perimeter landscaping. An emphasis was placed by staff and the applicant to preserve as many of the perimeter trees as we could because they're somewhat substantial at this point in time. And most of those trees can be saved. I believe a total of ten trees will be relocated and then some additional trees actually being planted on the facility, around the facility. Property is, it's a large tract of land, uh, one-point-eight acres in size. And again, as was indicated, the proposal, uh, the Whataburger restaurants, a little over thirty-seven hundred square feet, uh, in size. The existing building, uh, on the property, uh, developed in twenty-fourteen, and again, as was indicated, most of the existing utility infrastructure to the property is being, uh, maintained. Engineering Division did submit a memorandum, uh, regarding the, uh, public facilities for the property and their review of the site plan. There are, uh, special conditions applicable to a restaurant with drive-through lanes. Uh, two different sections of code apply, and they have met those requirements. Uh, the drive-through lane, uh, order menu boards are actually, uh, between, uh, the building along the, the west property line and the Panda, uh, restaurant to the, uh, to the west, so it does comply with our menu board requirements. Uh, parking, again, we do not have a maximum parking, uh, ratio, so they, uh, well exceed what the parking requirements are, based upon both, uh, customer service area and seats. The building design, the materials are in compliance with our building design standards. Fire District did review, uh, the site plan. A truck-turning movement was placed over the parking lot area. I believe they're actually widening the, uh, entryways off of the private drives into the site, uh, but all the truck-turning movements are complied with, uh, for the Fire District. Again, the stormwater management system, this is part of the overall Raymore Galleria, so the stormwater runoff from this side is actually collected and through a, um, storm sewer system that gets to the detention basins. There's actually two of them, one behind Lowe's, one behind Sam's Club. Uh, they are doing some best management practices to treat the stormwater on-site with the mechanical system that was described. Uh, site lighting, uh, for a commercial site, it does comply with our site lighting requirements. Staff submitted proposed findings of fact on this, uh, site plan submittal, and we do, uh, recommend that the commission accept those, uh, findings and, uh, approve the site plan for the Whataba, Whataburger, subject to the eleven conditions outlined in the staff report. That concludes staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Catterett. Any commission members have any questions of the applicant or the staff at this time?
Yeah, if we could clarify the, the, the case number. It's, it's, it's different in different spots.
Okay.
Twenty-one oh, twen, twenty-one oh two four, um, on our agenda. It's twenty-one oh two four. At the beginning of, uh, our paperwork, and then the sta, the staff finding of facts on page eighteen is two one oh two five.
It is two one oh two four.
Two four. Gotcha. Okay.
Mr. Faulkner, did you have a question, or was that the same question?
Same question. Thank you, Commissioner Bowie.
Any additional questions or comments at this time? All right. Well, I would, I would normally like to step out and, and do, um, my own motion, but obviously, that's kinda frowned upon, so. I would entertain a motion, um, and I believe, Mr. Urquia. No, it's, it's okay. It's, uh, Mr. Zur wouldn't get on me too much, but, uh, it, the chairman is usually, i- if nobody else has a motion, I guess, but.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion for you, Chairman. Uh, I'll, uh, make the motion that we, uh, accept the staff-proposed findings of fact and approve Case number two one zero two four, the Whataburger site plan, subject to the eleven conditions listed in our packet.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Urquia, second by Vice Chair Pfizer, to accept staff findings of fact and forward Case two one zero two four, the Whataburger site plan, subject to the eleven conditions. And, does that, I'm sorry, does that go to council, or, yes? Forward, yeah, so, to council. All right. Uh, any discussion on the topic? I'll use this brief moment to, uh, address Commissioner Bowie. Um, having spent four years in college in Texas, Whataburger, um, got me through many late nights, many term papers, and, um, lots of, of just cram sessions, so, I was very excited to see this coming to town. Um, and, uh, I'm very, yeah, I'm really excited. Hey, you know, Whataburger, twenty-four hours, having that here, you'll, you'll understand.
That was, that was almost the reason I was hesitant, because it would not be good for my health to have access to food like this twenty-four hours.
I'll just say chicken honey bu, butter biscuits will change your life. Um, so, uh, with that.
Since now, uh, since now it's not, uh, uh, school that you gotta get through, maybe you can get through, through a poor round of golf.
Yeah, there you go. Or, or, or an evening after post-golf activities. Um, with that being said, if there are no additional comments, questions, uh, I say let's vote for this. Uh, all those in favor? Seeing a suc, successful eight-nothing, the case passes. Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to that, and maybe, who knows, maybe Patrick will show up for the ribbon-cutting for that one. Thank you, Mr. Mahomes, and your thirty Whataburgers coming to town. That takes us out of new business, and will take us into city council report. Mr. Zur.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to be able to provide the city council report this evening. As always, I would invite Mr. Crass, Mr. Catterett, and Mayor Turnbo to always chime in and either correct me or add to the council report if they believe there is something in addition that needs to be provided. Uh, I have two council meetings to report to you on this evening. First is from Monday, July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. At that meeting, the council had the opportunity to take up for second reading and final approval, the Saddle Brook rezoning. Uh, the Saddle Brook rezoning was the alteration of sixty-five acres, uh, to an, the existing, I'm sorry, uh, for a residential development east of Stonegate subdivision. Uh, you'd recall having this before you on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. At that time, it made a recommendation for denial by a vote of six to three. The council reviewed that, uh, initially on their July twelfth, uh, meeting, and approved it seven to one, and for a second reading and final approval, approved it on the twenty-sixth by a vote of seven to one. Similarly, the companion case to go along with that was the Saddle Brook preliminary plat. Uh, again, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission had the opportunity to review this on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. At that time, it approved the preliminary plat by a vote of six to three, and the final approval for the Saddle Brook preliminary plat, uh, was completed by a vote of seven to one on the twenty-sixth. The next item on the agenda that, uh, was considered by the council was the replat of the Brookside Tenth, Tract Five, I'm sorry, Tract V and Tract W. You all approved this on July sixth, twenty-twenty-one by a vo, on unanimous vote. Uh, council took this up for their second vote, and also unanimously approved that. Uh, that would have been the Brookside Builders' request. The next item that was considered, I'm sorry, that takes care of all of the items with regard to the July twenty-sixth meeting. I'm now move to the August ninth meeting. Uh, August ninth meeting, we had, uh, two items taken up for your consideration, uh, each of which you had had the opportunity to review and consider. Uh, the first item was the rezoning of the Watermark. That was held as a public hearing. At the conclusion of that, this was for, um, the C-three designation Regional Commercial District, uh, amending it to the R-three-B Apartment Community District, uh, for Watermark, and, uh, this one was approved by you, a unanimous vote, uh, on July sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Again, there was a public hearing and a unanimous vote at the initial reading for, um, the Watermark project. The next one was the Cinderella Project. This was the rezoning. Again, another public hearing was held. Cinderella Project included the, uh, R-one-P Single Family Residential District to PUD Planned Unit District. Uh, this was approved by your commission on July twentieth by a vote of five to four. Uh, that, during the course of the, uh, consideration by the city council, the council considered it and, uh, voted unanimously for the first reading on that. That would conclude the city council report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, you have anything to add? Mr. Crass, anything to add?
Um, yeah, I'd like to introduce, uh, Trent Salisbury, my assistant city engineer. Trent joined us from Dodge City, Kansas in April, and, um, he will start, uh, shadowing me at, uh, some meetings. He's currently working on several construction projects, and will be working more into, uh, some of the other engineering-type, uh, tasks in the ci, within the department.
Fantastic. Welcome, sir. Mr. Catterett, we, uh, have a staff report from your department, sir.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, two items. I'll start off, uh, talking just real briefly about the U.S. Census, uh, which released the, uh, official, uh, census counts for April first of twenty-twenty this week. Uh, Raymore's official population, uh, now listed at twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one. Uh, that's a nineteen-point-four percent increase over our twenty-ten population. We grew by, officially by three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five residents. Uh, so nineteen-point-four percent's a considerable increase. Um, and actually, the, uh, official population count was above what the estimate was from the U.S. Census Bureau, uh, most recently, even the, uh, their, uh, their twenty-twenty, uh, estimates. So, uh, I feel very, uh, positive about that number, and we're starting to delve into more of the detailed information. It'll be into September before we get the full breakdown of all the data they collected. Uh, but with the population information we have, one of the first, uh, assignments of use of that data will be looking at the ward maps for the city and making sure we have equal distribution of the wards. Uh, that was done, of course, back in twenty-ten with, with that census. And so, our staff is currently, uh, coming up with a few, uh, uh, potential, uh, boundary maps, basically. There's probably two or three different scenarios that, uh, we could present, uh, to the city council, uh, moving forward. So, that's currently our first use of the data. So, we're glad to have that. The second item is just looking at our calendar. Uh, we do have some cases that are being filed, um, and moving forward. So, we will have a meeting on September seventh, um, on your, uh, planning pipeline. It identifies we have, uh, the second phase of what's known as the Madison Valley subdivision, uh, moving forward. A developer has bought all that undeveloped land. It's about forty-six acres, looking to reclassify the zoning from the current R-one to our R-one-point-five district. That's a district that the commission, uh, created, uh, several years ago. And, uh, but this will be the first property that'd be requesting, uh, that classification for the property. It's slightly smaller lot sizes and lot width than the R-one. And, uh, with that, they're submitting a separate, uh, application for the preliminary plat, uh, for the subdivision, currently showing a hundred and fifty-four lots. It is still, still going through the discussion and revision process. I have a Good Neighbor meeting actually scheduled tomorrow, uh, for that development. Um, and I know that some of the residents have already provided input on that, that we passed on to the applicant, so, uh, it's, it's scheduled for September seventh, and as long as we have all the resubmittal documents in place, we'll move forward with that. We do know on that date, we will have, uh, Mr. Eke presenting our twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six capital improvement program. Each year, uh, he brings forward the, uh, list of projects specifically planned for, uh, that's part of the capital budget for next fiscal year, as well as those, uh, outlying projects. Uh, currently, September twenty-first, we have, uh, on the agenda, the annual review of the Unified Development Code. We do have a couple of other applications that are, uh, being submitted. Today, we got the application for the Alexander Creek Final Plat. You recently approved the preliminary plat. They've been doing some site work out there, quite a bit of site work. Uh, we received the Final Plat application for the third phase of Timber Trail subdivision. So, this would be the completion of Timber Trails that would be on the east side of Dean Avenue, so it'd provide actually two more connections, where there's currently stub, stub streets. It would tie in, um, the, the rest of that Timber Trails area to, uh, Dean Avenue. So, we look forward to that, uh, phase of development. And we have a couple of other applications pending.
How many lots is that phase?
I believe, I'd be guessing, I believe thirty. It's not a large, twenty-five to thirty. It's basically an extension of a street, and then there'll be one cul-de-sac up towards, uh, Johnston Drive, uh, area. Uh, that's currently what we, uh, have scheduled for, uh, activities. Um, see a lot of uptick in, in interest in development, so I, I believe we'll be busy for the rest of this year.
Very good.
That concludes staff report.
Thank you, sir. Um, at this point, we would move into public comments. Is any member of the public who wants to come forward and make a comment? I won't give the rules if nobody's coming forward. So, we'll move on to commission member comments. And I think I'll start over here with Commissioner Faulkner.
I wanna thank staff and welcome Trent aboard.
Uh, Vice Chair Pfizer, please.
Okay. Um, last Friday, I was able to, uh, visit the Lofts apartment. They had, uh, open house, and I got to tour some of the apartments, and, um, they're, they're very nice, kinda small, um, but very nice. I wish there was a little more covered parking available there, but, you know, whatever people want. But it, but it is nice, and, uh, it was nice to see that. And interestingly enough, while I was there, I met a woman who recently moved here from Arizona, and she was saying, "Oh, we need some more sit-down restaurants." And I said, "Well, we're getting a Whataburger," and she got so excited, and she didn't care about the sit-down restaurants anymore, and she was telling me how great Whataburger is, which I've never had, so I'm really looking forward to it. So, then I came home and my packet had Whataburger in it, and, um, one of the things she asked me was, "When will it be here?" And I meant to ask that, and I forgot, so, any idea? You know, like, tied to it.
I don't know. I don't know. You know?
Okay. As long as it's not like five years down the road. Um, and, uh, so anyway, I wanted to share that. Um, the only other thing, I, um, attended the Hawk Ridge Park, um, fundraising, and Mr. Zur was, um, selling something called hippie juice. Just thought I'd share that. I didn't have any. It sounded kinda dangerous, so I, um, I, uh, just thought that was pretty, pretty cool to see you in a different element than here, you know, serving in this capacity. Thank you.
Do you need to address that, sir?
We tried all night to work on a different name for it.
Apparently, they had so much of it, trying to come up for another name for it, that they forgot. Um, Secretary Peterman, sir.
Thanks, staff, for all your hard work. Um, I would like to explore the possibilities of having work sessions for planning and zoning. I think there's some education that, that we could all gain, especially us, the ones that have just come in not too long ago. Um, got some ideas on that. Hopefully, the city would be able to support the efforts. Uh, training is always good. Otherwise, I don't believe if we ever announced in the P&amp;Z our new tenant, our big warehouse, the name of, name of it and what they're doing out there. Jim, can you address that real quick?
But you guys, you publicly addressed it during the city council meeting the other day. Southern Glaziers. You've got a lot on your plate.
No, yeah, I just went blank. Southern Glaziers has purchased the property now and, uh, has ownership of the property. They will be moving forward with, uh, interior plans. Right now, it's just a big shell of a building. And, uh, over the next year, probably, it will take at least that long to retrofit the building for their facility, put in the, the, uh, equipment, the handling equipment. It will be their distribution center for, uh, the state of Missouri, so, um, it will be their, their principal hub. It's, uh, again, uh, sole use of the building, so it's a, a great company, great community partner. Excited to have them, uh, be part of Raymore. They currently have a facility in North Kansas City, a small facility, so this is, uh, again, going to be their, their facility for the entire state, so we're excited to have them. Don't know exactly yet the, the total number of positions. What we do know is this, when the building was constructed, um, there was, of course, parking areas approved as part of that. Uh, the tenant had very specific parking requirements. They had to enlarge the parking lot, um, considerably over what was built initially, so they, uh, obviously, with a facility this large, they intend to have a large workforce.
Will the, uh, North Kansas City location be consolidating to this location? Do we know? It's some.
Can't answer that, sir. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Peterman. Uh, Commissioner Inger.
Special thanks to staff again for keeping me prepared for these. I also like to welcome our newest, and I'll give you some of the same advice I got when I first started. For this, you went to college.
That was the advice, you went to college. Very well. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and, and go with Commissioner Urquia, since Commissioner Mansour is not here.
Um, as usual, thank you to city staff for all that you guys do. Um, as usual, thank you to city staff for all that you guys do, um, and for getting us all our information ahead of time. Uh, I have never seen our chairman quite this excited about anything you guys have brought before us. Um, so kudos on, on, uh, coming up with something that, that got him that, that engaged. Um, before I forget, uh, I will be absent for the September twenty-first meeting. Um, want to go ahead and, and while I be, so I don't forget to let someone know. Uh, but otherwise, as always, thank you guys for all you do.
Nice jab. Commissioner Bowie?
Um, just a couple of things. Uh, thank you, staff, obviously. Um, always curious about, has water, has Whatabur, Whataburger ever been denied for anything? I mean, it's such a, I mean, such overwhelming, uh, uh, support here. I just, uh, okay, then the, the other thing I wanted to address was what the mayor mentioned about the curve. Um, right off Harmon to Lucy Webb or whatever. I was, um, I was, I was curious about that question also earlier, um, similar to how he asked, why come there wouldn't be something built there to enter into that? But, um, and I'm always, always curious about accidents on that curve. I've been here, uh, sixteen, since two thousand and five, I've lived out here, and I always go down that curve, and it seems like there'd be a lot more accidents than there have been on that curve, because it's a really sharp curve, but I'm kind of getting off topic. But, um, the other thing about the lofts, uh, that were just built, um, the apartments, I'm curious to see how the buffer is gonna work between the apartments and the school. So close in proximity, um, from the apartments to the school. Um, nothing else. Maybe, uh, tippy juice? Maybe we could, no, I'm just kidding. All right, that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Turnbow?
Yeah, good reports tonight again by staff. Thank you all, uh, for, uh, for all your hard work. I did have, um, I did have some trepidation from, uh, the perspective of planning as it relates to, uh, the C-two to P U D, uh, rezoning. I, um, I still have some trepidation about that particular project, and its nearness to the highway. But we talked about zoning tonight, not plating or preliminary plating or anything like that, so I'm, I may end up being more critical of that particular project in the future. I'm not sure that's an appropriate spot for light tech, but like we said, we were voting for zoning, nothing else tonight, so. Um, I think that's why we probably saw a few hands go up slowly on that, uh, particular, uh, vote count tonight. Anyway, uh, welcome to Whataburger. We're looking forward to you being here. Thank you very much, uh, for picking Raymore. That's all I have. Thank you.
Since the jabs keep coming, um, I will let you know that, um, for those of you who are, uh, fans of Whataburger, such as myself, um, Academy Sports now has a Whataburger line of, uh, clothing and fishing accessories that you can go out and buy, so, uh, get on Academy. So I don't know that they'll carry it at the local Belton store because of, you know, the, the store's not open quite yet, but just, if, if you need some, something else, uh, you can get some Magellan wear that is Whataburger labeled, that is a partnership of theirs. Um, other than that, thank you all for, uh, all the input and comments. Um, staff, thank you as always. Welcome to, even though, I guess you've been here for a couple of months, but welcome to the meetings. Um, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Urquia, second by Mayor Turnbow, to adjourn this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. All in favor? No slow hands. That is eight-nothing. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful night.